Let's get ready to rumble. Brandon Lewis here with the 10 con big seven weekend update, bringing you the news that the left leaning media outlets, the corporately funded behemoths and the Rhino establishment leadership wishes I wouldn't bring. We have got stories about a new attack on Tennessee's Human Life Protection Act. Is this coming from Republicans again this time? Or is this something else? Who knows? I'll tell you about it in a minute. Tennessee special session bills expected to revive in 2024. Okay, like 2020 is like the night of the living dead. Like these things just won't die. We're going to talk about Shelby County GOP leadership deciding that you don't need to know if your school board member is a Republican or a Democrat. They want to keep you in the dark and they did so with a secret ballot. That sounds above board. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee and Doctor Addresses Hamilton County Commission Regarding Unavoidability blip, 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 unavoidable ugly head. Um, Wilson County School Board Votes To Keep Alright guys, we got something in the mailbag here. Here we go. I'm gonna read this puppy. Dear Brandon, I wish I had something profound clever and/or extraordinary to say that will be profoundly encouraging and deeply meaningful to you, but alas, all I got is a plain old genuine heartfelt thank you. Thank you for all the late nights, sleepless nights and lost sleep. Thank you for all the time away from family and friends for you graciously putting up with having to listen to ignorant people babble about the purported revolutionary and the unnecessary disrespectful oftentimes hateful emails. I do get those. I do get those. I got one today and my common refrain and Jason's common refrain is there's an unsubscribe button at the bottom of your email. You feel free to press it or as William F Buckley used to say, cancel your own GD subscription. I don't believe in using that language, but that's what William F Buckley of National Review used to say. Back to the note for having to act in nice when you'd rather hit someone eating crappy food on the fly at odd times or not, but most of all, thank you for staying the course when you want to give up being a beacon of truth in a sea of dishonesty, corruption and confusing. I could read on, but thank you Tracy. From the bottom of my heart, I appreciate you sending this. Often these kind words are what keep me going. I ain't gonna lie. Cause it ain't the money because I don't get paid. Thank you for sending that Tracy. That's from the mailbag. Guys, do go subscribe to our free daily e-newsletter and you can do that by texting news, N E W S two four two three two oh five fifty six hundred. Text the word news, N E W S two four two three two oh five fifty six hundred. You can follow us on the social media platforms where we have yet to be shadow banned and those are Twitter, Gab, Getter, Truth, MeWe and Rumble. Ye old Facebook, boy, they hate our guts and they barely show anybody anything. So if that's the only platform you follow us on, then you are in the wrong spot. Get on over to Twitter where all of the General Assembly critters and all of the Democrats who want to ruin our state seem to hang out. So come join me at Twitter and hit the follow button. Search for Tennessee Conservative News. First story, a new attack on Tennessee's Human Life Protection Act. Two doctors and three women filed a lawsuit against Tennessee's abortion law arguing it prevents the implementation of life-saving medical care. At the first challenge to Tennessee's strict abortion ban since a narrow exception bill passed the state legislature earlier this year, the exception law allows physicians to perform abortions in medical emergencies like molar or ectopic, ectopic rather pregnancies to remove a miscarriage, save the mother's life or prevent serious risk of substantial and irreversible impairment of major bodily functions of the pregnant woman. The suit argues that the exceptions passed aren't clear enough, creating a quote pervasive fear and uncertainty throughout the medical community, the throughout the medical community, throughout the abortion industry in Tennessee. It was probably more accurate. The abortion lawsuit filed Monday is supported by the Center for Reproductive Rights, you know, because the center of baby killers was, was not a very good PC term and they thought that would hurt fundraising. So they went for Center for Reproductive Rights, an out of state organization which has filed similar cases in other states. Tennessee Right to Life continues to express their support of the law since the law went into effect. An estimated 10,000 lives have been saved from abortion in our state and the state law is clear in its intent and constitutional in its application. Let's hope that that doesn't make it anywhere. Although we have some really liberal judges, you know, Judge Ronnie Greer and a few others. And if they can find some way to do something detrimental to kids, they're going to rule that way. So let's hope, let's hope nobody like that gets a hold of it, although they may. Next story, Tennessee special session bills expected to revive in 2024. Oh, everybody's so excited. A measure by House Speaker Cameron Sexton Sexton designed to stiffen sentences for serious juvenile crimes is one of several bills expected to be revived in 2024 after dying in special session. Sexton's bill passed sixty-four to four when Democrats walked out in protest after Sexton silenced Representative Justin Jones of Nashville for speaking off topic too many times, which goes to show you, everything wrong in this state falls at the feet of the GOP because when the Democrats walk out the door, they don't need them for a quorum or to conduct business. So when anybody ever blames the Democrats for problems in our state, you know that that is untrue. Another bill involves a gun storage requirement. Democrat Representative Caleb Hammer is working on revised version of the bill that would allow cities to set their own regulations within the confines of state law, which means that anybody that lives in a city with a liberal city council like Chattanooga or Knoxville or Memphis or probably even places like Murfreesboro, it's going to be onerous. So hopefully this thing doesn't get anywhere. We know how that goes. Well, but for those of us who lived in metro areas during the pandemic, we know, we know what happens to freedoms and to constitutional rights when Democrats are in charge. Another bill, Senator Farrell Hale, Farrell. That is an unusual name. I don't believe I'd have kept that one. It's set to renew a bill requiring healthcare officials to notify law enforcement when they hear a credible threat of mass violence and to make those types of threats a felony. I don't agree with this. Threats should not be a felony. Somebody, you know, has, has too many beers and they're with a buddy and one of them says, I'm going to kill you for that. Well, is he going to kill you or is that just rhetorical? Who knows? And I would not want the state of Tennessee to be the person to judge it. That's just me. But Farrell Hale and a lot of those senators, they're really big fans of pissing, excuse my language, all over the first amendment. And we've got lots of Rhinos that would, would love nothing more than to find a thousand different ways to silence and shut up different views that they disagree with. They're working on it all the time. A bill by House Majority Leader William Lambeth regarding the closing of child autopsy reports was passed in the special session eighty-six zero and is suspected to be brought back. The bill exempts autopsy reports on minors who are victims of violent crimes from the state's public record laws. I don't know if that's a good bill or not. It would have allowed parents or legal guardians to approve the releases of those records. I don't know. Kind of indecisited about that. Undecided, rather. Another bill by Republican Gino Boulso is also expected to be renewed in 2024. The bill requires schools to install alarms with strobe lights and sound systems to disorient potential shooters. Sounds like a good idea to me. Senator Todd Gardenhire, Chairman of the Senate Judiciary Committee predicts nearly every bill the House passed in the special session will arise again next year and quote, probably with the same result. Oh, Todd, it's good. That one thing about Todd, he is consistently a jackass to constituents and political opponents and colleagues. So that is one thing we're getting there. But at least the Senate will have time to discuss bills, take testimony and quote unquote vet legislation, said Gardenhire. Well, you know, that's what you get when people like Jeremy Phazen pick a fight with the other chamber. What do you expect? You expect, you're gonna, you think that builds bridges, buddy? It does not. Guys, somebody sent me an email recently, or is it a text message? Somebody sent me a text message here recently and said, is the Mill Creek View podcast legitimate? That's what they said. Is it legitimate? Somebody just wanted to know. Conservatives are very untrusting and you know, you go through life long enough, you can realize probably why. And I said, Steve Abramowitz is one of the few people in the state of Tennessee that actually reports on interviews, brings information to people about state issues from a conservative perspective. And we have so few of us. Me, Gary Humble, Tennessee Stans, Bobby Petray does a good job with her e-newsletter. I'm going to leave people out and everybody's going to get mad. You see the Tennessee Christians, I'm gonna mess that up. Conservative Christians. We've got a few folks that do radio shows around like Maceal Duncan, that I recently was on a, on a show for, the Tennessee Stans podcast, Freedom Matters podcast, and there are some others. There are some others. And Americans for Prosperity, Tori Venable. Sometimes people get mad because I mentioned them as well, but I'm sorry. They're, they're, they're with me 90% of the time nationally and they're with me almost 100% of the time on the state stuff. So I, we don't have enough people that are really conservative in the state to quibble or squabble among ourselves. Okay? It's like a lot of Rhinos and a few informed conservatives that are active and then everybody else is kind of politically ignorant of what's going on and they just kind of vote out of a sense of civic obligation. Steve, this is the worst live read ever. I'm so sorry. But back to my point, Steve does a good job. He does, and I hope he does it for a long time. And he is the creator and developer of the Mill Creek View Podcast. So type in Mill, M I L L, Creek View Podcast, Tennessee, wherever you get your podcasts and season one of the Mill Creek View CEO special is out. You can see it on YouTube, Rumble, anywhere you get it. A new episode comes out every Monday at nine AM where Steve interviews great American business owners doing good work. If you're interested in getting caught up in Florida or in Washington State, you can tune into Kat Stansel and Vincent Cavallari respectively to keep up with that. But Mill Creek View Tennessee still remains my favorite podcast. So do go support our friend Steve. He is super conservative and yes, he is legitimate. Shelby County GOP leadership. It's almost like GOP leadership is like a code word for Rhino in most instances. I mean, there's a few, but boy, it's more Rhino than it is conservative. Says no to partisan school board races and secret ballot. Our source told us that it was quote, clear from the first five minutes that it was scripted event meant to do one thing, and that's keep partisan school board elections from taking place in Shelby County. A leaked resolution from Shelby County Republican Party C E C alarmed Shelby County conservatives as the documents stated clearly that Republican leadership intended to reverse the August resolution as it pertained to school boards. Why would true conservative Republicans not want you to know if someone was a bona fide Republican or adhered to conservative values when they are managing the largest piece of the budget for your county government? Why would you want to be kept in the dark about that? Little piece of very important information. This stinks to high heavens. The morning of the meeting last Thursday, Terry Rowland, District 29 Tennessee Republican Party State Executive Committee Man went on the radio to say that he would get the six municipal school districts to sue the county GOP if they voted for partisan elections. It sounds like a guy that needs to be, we need a different guy than, than Terry Rowland. Somebody needs to probably run against him like a real conservative. About 100 people, many in support of partisan elections showed up for the C E C meeting on Thursday night where Germantown law enforcement were in attendance for crowd control. Rowland again threatened a lawsuit aimed at everyone in the room and claimed that partisan school board elections would not be legal in Shelby County. Harumph, harumph. I don't know what noise a Rhino makes, but I imagine that's, that's what it was. I need to find out Rhino noises. We need that. Jason, can you, can you send me an MP3 of some Rhino noises? We need to work that into the, work that into the big seven here. Currently Shelby County is the only Tennessee county out of 95 to have made the decision not to allow partisan school board elections is because their C E C is apparently full of Rhinos. Y'all need a clean house over in Shelby County. Many who attended the Thursday night meeting came prepared to speak, including members of Shelby County's local's Momford Liberty Chapter and conservative women of Collierville. They did not get the opportunity to make their case for school board primaries. Carrie Vaughn, Shelby County GOP Chairman limited debate to four speakers from each side, after which he adjourned to go to an executive meeting where the vote was taken secretly. Why would you take a vote like this secretly? Why would anybody vote for anyone on this committee if they want to do things secretly that are probably not the will of the Republicans? Guys, y'all need a clean house. All these guys need to go. Y'all need to do what they did in Williamsburg County. You just have a big Rhino hunt, throw them all out into the land of political obscurity. According to sources, Vaughn invited specific guests to speak for as long as they wished. These speakers representative nonpartisan supporters, even state Senator Brent Trailer, who wished to speak in support of primaries at the school board level was prevented from entering by a security guard. Nice. Blue Cross Blue Shield. And they act as if we don't have any reason to be worried about it, yet they were in the leadership and in the House when they trampled our constitutional rights and failed to stand up to Bill Lee. The reason people don't trust Republican leadership is because they failed us so miserably during that experiment, during that test. They broke their oaths of office. They are liars. And when you lie and when you economically damage people and when you take away their rights for an extended period of time, they don't trust you. When you fail the conservative convictions test so epically that it results in that kind of devastation, why would you expect people to trust you? Well, I only hit her once. And yet that's the reason people don't trust you because typically people are more likely to repeat their past behaviors, not not repeat them. I think anybody that had a hand in that, that didn't stand up, that didn't jump up and down should, should be cast out. Further, all the Republican leadership, Bill Lee's bootlickers up there in Nashville, they want to tout all the stuff that they did. And they do it in misleading ways. Like right now, like if somebody wants to force you to be employment, they can. They can. We still got all kinds of weird laws on the books. Right now Bill Lee's still got his emergency powers. If he wants to again abuse his executive privilege, you can rest assured, we don't have the courage or conviction in the legislature to stand up to him again. They didn't stand up the first time. They still haven't repealed his emergency powers. Still, it's amazing. It really is. And they wonder why people don't trust him. It's because there's not a whole lot of evidence to trust. There's like a lot more evidence to not trust. So if you want to get people's trust back as a conservative Republican, how about we start tackling some of these freaking tough issues? Illegal immigration, school choice, quit giving all these millionaires and billionaires, millions and billions of corporate welfare at the taxpayers' expense. Clean up this lobbying corruption where you've got people related to and sleeping with folks up in Nashville that are in elected office in order to fleece the public for corporate welfare. It's all unethical. That's why people don't trust you. That's why they have, I'm getting on a little rip here. I'll get back to the news. So there is this, where is it? I don't know. I don't want to even say it because I can't, I don't remember the name of the organization. I'll leave it alone. Okay. I'll just say this. You'll figure it out who it is. So there's this like fake grassroots conservative organization that has recently been spun up and it just tickles me. And they, they award people like Jack Johnson, you know, captain, don't call it a red flag law because it won't get passed. Let's call it something else. Let's market it different. Yeah. King of the gas tax, William Lambeth. Let's let illegal immigrants be police officers. They want to give them these like wrestling belts. I don't know. Conservative legislators of the year, right out of the, right out of the gate. They are the quote unquote Tennessee's largest grassroots organization. And I doubt that. And then the individuals that support the organization also have connections of not delivering stuff and not paying people. It is because the Republican leadership has gotten so much pushback from every grassroots organization and all of the real true conservative Republican Party Chairman in the state, the real conservatives, not the Shelby Counties of the world. And there's nowhere they can, there's nowhere they can go for cover except maybe the lobbyists and the corporations because the Republicans are sick and tired of this crap. So they're having to spin up fake organizations to pretend like they're doing well and, and that their policy lines up with conservative values, which it doesn't. This is, it's all a symptom. It's all a symptom of their lack of sticking to the platform and the lack of honesty. That's why there's no H in Rhino because the H is silent because it stands for honesty. Next story. Doctor. Amazing. Guys, listen here. Listen here. This thing does not run on, on rainbows and buttercups. Like we spend a lot of money. We do here at the Tennessee Conservative on writing articles, spending money on social media, software applications. I have to travel occasionally. That's the only money I've ever taken. Promoting things. It's just expensive. I would get nickled and dimed to death and our bank balance just stays where it is. It's never grown. We just got a kind of safety net in there and I'll leave it all in there. Okay. And that's it. We need your help. We need your help. Why do conservative or rather, why do liberal corporations control all the politics in our state on both the Republican and the Democrat side? Because conservative Christians set it home with their wallet. That's why we only have one conservative media outlet. That's why, you know, I kept wondering, why aren't there more conservative media outlets as I enter into my third year this October? Because conservatives don't give. We got to change that. Please do go to conservative, Tennesseeconservativenews.com/support. And when you do, if you give any amount, any amount whatsoever, we will send you this Don't California My Tennessee bumper sticker. We will also send you this. Sorry. It's a double. Stop feeding the Rhinos bumper sticker. We need to quit feeding those Rhinos. They are fat and happy enough. If you give $50 or more, a recurring donation, which we desperately need, those recurring donations are really what keep us afloat. We will send you this. I think we're going to go back to this one. Proud Tennessee Conservative Tumblr. And we will send you this Proud Tennessee Conservative koozie, both of which are made of space age materials that are indestructible. They are unless you do something to them and that's on you. So go to Tennesseeconservativenews.com/support and do donate and help us. You can also mail checks, buddy. I'll take them. You can mail checks to P O Box six two five, P O Box six two five. The old mailbox has been a little light here lately. We could, you could use a little, little kick in the pants financially. P O Box six two five, Signal Mountain Tennessee, three seven, three seven, seven. That's Signal Mountain Tennessee, three seven, three seven, seven. P O Box six two five. Okay. On with the show. And by the way, if you have failed to get your hands on one of these, you need it. Man, I can, we've had tens of thousands of people download this puppy and I'm excited about it. Rhino Report, here it is, 2023, baby. It's got the worst, it's got the best, it's got a vote by vote, play by play. You need this. You need this in your community, especially if you're involved in patriot or grassroots groups. And there's also a link in there to this one, which is the 2022 Rhino Report. And in order to vote with knowledge and not ignorance, you have to know what happened in the 2022 and the 2023 and later the 2024 legislative cycle as you go to vote for your state reps and senators. And if you see that people are Rhinos, you need to not vote for them and you need to help whoever is running against them. That is my opinion. That is my first amendment right as a journalist. Vote them out. Just, that's just Bill Lee. He's a Southern Democrat, probably trending, trending toward you know, just, just, just good old corporate liberalism. And that's why you see people like Penny Schwinn who just left. And then you see that the Department of Education hiring people that are just completely immersed and steeped in anti-racism and D E I, Marxism, critical theory. Like we're just staffing our institutions with this in Tennessee. And then we wonder why we turn out an educational product that is utter garbage considering the amount of money we spend per pupil every year. It's because we don't have conservative leadership at any level of government, not at the top. Last Thursday, liberal Chattanooga mayor Tim Kelly announced that he plans to run for a second term in 2025. At this point, Kelly still has a year and a half left in his mayoral term, even though Chattanooga City elections are technically nonpartisan. During his time as mayor, Kelly has supported left-leaning political operations and efforts to convert Chattanooga into a quote unquote smart city, as well as mocking the death of conservative radio personality Rush Limbaugh. Back in 2018, the mayor helped launch Unify Ed, a left-leaning political operation that has since supported Kelly's political efforts. And you know, here's the other thing about Mayor Kelly. He will not police crime. And that is my biggest issue. I moved out of Chattanooga in the Brainerd area and I have a, had a building I sold off of Rossa Boulevard and a house I've sold now because of the littering, the loitering, the panhandling, the public intoxication, the, the just piles epicly large piles of trash in Chattanooga where they just, when I, 10 years ago, if you were walking up and down the road and you looked like you were out of your gourd and drunk, like they'd send you down to the drunk tank, right? You could not have in a million years have piled up massive piles of trash and slept under a bridge or slept in a parking lot or, you know, they're having this economic development meeting here in Chattanooga where they're all mad because there's not been a lot of economic development in Brainerd. And they think that it's because the Chamber of Commerce and the city won't invest or whatever. And I'm like, no, it's because businesses and people are leaving this corridor in Chattanooga and downtown peripheral areas where they're not, you know, except for the touristy parts, which they police pretty well. People are just leaving because the quality of life issues are completely unaddressed. And in this respect, Tim Kelly and on the crime issue has been an utter failure, utter failure. Despite local news outlets being quote, building a competitive regional economy under Kelly's slew of accomplishments in February 2021, Kelly actually moved his personal business, Southern Honda Power Sports, out of Chattanooga so he can get some tax money. The relocation of his business to East Ridge, Kelly was able to pocket more than 1.9 million dollars while costing the city of Chattanooga around 5.3 million in tax revenue over the following 2020, following 22 years. So even Kelly knows that you need to leave Chattanooga with your own business. Kelly won't even stay in Chattanooga, but he wants to govern it. While these things took place before Kelly took to office and stepped in his role as mayor during the term, Kelly has supported efforts to convert Chattanooga into a smart city known as the One Chattanooga Plan or the Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan, which they, you know, I had some people that had some meetings with the city and they said, well, we don't think we're going to accomplish any of this, but we just, we just want the federal money. Taking money for things that you don't intend to do is both dishonest and corrupt. That's just my opinion. The idea is to create a 15-minute city structure using the same technology China uses to monitor and control its population. That's going to be great. That's what I want to see come to the town I used to live in that's right down the road. If reelected in 2025, Kelly would serve his second and final term and Chattanooga mayor unlimited to two, four-year terms. So luckily they're going to, they're going to destroy it four years at a time as we elect more and more liberals to ruin what used to be called the scenic city. We used to call it the scenic city because it's so beautiful. Chattanooga is absolutely beautiful. But under Tim Kelly, there ain't nothing scenic about it. It's ugly. It's dirty and it's unsafe. It is. I mean, there's some nice things to go see and do and I still love my city, but I just watch the leadership turn a blind eye to all the, all the slow steady decline of quality of life issues in Tennessee and the lack of policing. Whenever you see that stuff, that is the harbinger of decay. When you go down Brainerd Road, when you go down downtown and somebody's on every corner drugged out of their mind, begging people for money with piles of trash around them. And then, then there's like other piles of trash all over the place and graffiti every place. And then if you call the police, they don't, they don't ever prosecute any of the ordinances that are on the books for that stuff. That is like, that is, that is the harbinger for, that's the canary in the coal mine. Things are going to go downhill and Tim Kelly's going to stand on the gas. That's what I think. Guys, those are the big seven. I did ramble on a little bit. I had some things I had to get off my chest. I hope you enjoyed this. What am I doing this weekend? What's the Lewis family getting into? I'm going to be working on this Conservative Candidates Academy. I've got a lot of work to do. I want to practice my presentations, make sure I cover the most important things. I've got a limited amount of time. Make sure I cover the most important things. I've got a limited amount of time. You know, I could, I could spend a lot more time talking about the topics that I'm going to cover. But I'm going to hit the most important parts and give people educational resources to do the rest. So that's what I'm going to be kind of caught up with that. I hope I can do some chores around the house. My, my wife's going to go out of town, I think for one evening and take the kids to go see, see a cousin that's about to go off to London, I do believe, in Atlanta. So it's kind of like a see you later party. I'm going to stay at home. I got to stay at home. I got stuff to do. But with everything I got to do work wise, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do it. I got a garage that looks like a disaster area. Because I moved my offices and some things just had to be slung in there because I couldn't sell them or get rid of them quick enough. Boy, I want to get rid of some stuff. Got to get rid of this stuff. I'm going to get to church for the love of God. That's what I mean, for the love of God. I can get to church this weekend because I have been out of town. I don't like listening. I don't like watching the services. I want to be at the services. There's a big difference. So it is my plan to go do that. I'm going to try to get to the gym. I think I have somebody coming over. I don't remember. I've not planned this weekend very well, to be honest. And now I'm sitting here talking to you and I remember the fact that I forgot to go pick up my seventy-two Chevy Blazer at the mechanics and now they're closed. See, these are the things that run through my mind while I'm doing this podcast. Guys, I've enjoyed talking to you. There's been a lot of weirdness going on in Tennessee politics as we drift down from this special session where everything got heated and the Democrats and the liberal media basically got everything they wanted. And that was to make Republicans look like a big, huge pile of unprincipled idiots and they did a great job of it. Oh, I was talking to, to somebody who was in the legislature and I, I text back and forth and talked to tons of people that are in the legislature. Because of the nature of what I do, covering the news up there. Friendly ones, right? Which aren't many because we don't really have many conservatives up there. And I was talking about the special session and, and this member was just livid that, that it had ever happened, that he had to go through with it. And I just told him, I said, it just amazes me that Bill Lee would throw so many people and the Republican Party just under the bus over and over again. Like with no thought to the outcome, the politics of it, the results of it, the desires of the Republican primary voters that send those people up there. Their livelihood, their convenience. You know, because I mean, it's hard being up there at the Capitol if you've got a job or if you've got a business because it sucks up a bunch of time. And in the summer, people have got plans. They need to get back to work. They need to get back to their families. And here's old Billy, knowing that nothing's going to come of it. He's going to, we're just going to call it. So that nothing can happen and everybody can be ridiculed twenty-four seven by the liberal media. I can't, just can't believe it. And then I watched people that are in Republican leadership in the House and especially the House here lately and, and some in the Senate. Like just brown nosing Bill Lee. I'm talking like just a whole face, like, you know, like they'd fallen in a mud puddle, politically speaking. And I'm like, I wouldn't stand up for that lying sack of you know what for nothing. Bill Lee has broken his word more times. Then he's kept it. Trust us. Why? Look at your record. Look at your record. There is no trust. I mean, the only people that really trust Republicans in this state that are conservative are the folks that, that don't keep up with the news. That's it. That's all they got left. It is the uninformed public. And it is our job here at the Tennessee Conservative News to inform people. And we're the only news organization that does it without fear and without favor. A lot of people say they do things without fear and without favor, but they, they do neither, but we do. Here at the Tennessee Conservative News. And every time you go to Tennessee Conservative News dot com slash support, freedom rings a little louder in Tennessee and there's more truth out there and we find more and more people and we wake more and more people up and people vote differently because they understand that what is being promised on the campaign trail is not what's being delivered in Nashville or the courthouse. So guys, do help us. P O Box six two five. Signal Mountain Tennessee, three seven, three seven, seven. Brandon Lewis here. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your words of encouragement and your prayers. I'll see you next week at the big seven. Take care.